Regents, we are calling the meeting to order of the Delmar College Board of Regents Meeting at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, September 8th. Regents, if you are joining us, could you please turn on your camera so we can see who is here? I know that Regent Adami is going to be a few minutes late, and so he'll let me know when he arrives, but I will do the roll call now. Regent Evert?
Here.
Regent Bennett?
Here.
Regent Estrada? Regent Hutcherson?
I am here.
Regent Salinas? Regent Sherwood?
I'm here.
And I am Regent Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. I will ask the staff that's listening to please check with Regent Estrada and make sure she is not having technical issues in trying to join us. Due to the health and safety concerns related to COVID pandemic, we are meeting, conducted via video and/or teleconference in accordance with the guidance from the offices of the Governor and Attorney General. Members of the public are invited to watch this meeting livestream on the Delmar College website or to call in the toll-free number. Would ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please join me in reading the Delmar College Vision Statement. Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities. Delmar College is streaming live audio and video from the official Board of Regents Meeting on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting as may be considered closed session by statute. We do have one public comment for today. I am going to call on Mr. John Valls.
Madam Chair, thank you for having me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board and President Eskemia. My name is John Valls. I'm a public affairs consultant engaged by the developer of a project called Bohemian Colony. It is located right off the crosstown, near the, right behind the Temple Town movie theater and the Walmart, roughly 256 acres. We wanted to introduce the project to the board. I forwarded a PowerPoint presentation to Ms. Pettis. Hopefully, she's already got that out to the board. If not, I will get that out there to you guys for y'all to review at your leisure. I just wanted to introduce the project to you. We have initiated, the developers initiated a TURS with the city of Corpus Christi, and the city has approved the TURS, which is TURS number five. We have done a first reading or presentation to the Commissioners' Court, and we'll actually be going to the Commissioners' Court again tomorrow, and we anticipate that they'll be adopting TURS number five from the county side, at which point we are hoping that we can put our packet together timely to get it to the staff there in time for your October board meeting. It's a fabulous project. It's going to be filled with 999 multifamily apartment units, 777 townhomes, roughly a 10-acre park that the developer visions as a lifestyle park, and we're going to market it as a regional park. We've got a heavy area for commercial development. We're looking, negotiating with big-box retailers and so forth. So, we're really excited about the project. The developer, Mr. Roberto Santos-Williams, is planning to invest $230 million at full build-out over the 20-year TURS. It'll be a value of $320 million. So, it's a 75%, 25% share on the TURS. So, our goal today was just to introduce the project to you at public comment. Like I said, I forwarded the PowerPoint to Ms. Pettis, and we'll get that out to you if it hasn't already been sent out. And then, our goal in the next week is to get the packet together for the staff, for them to hopefully bring it before the board and the October meeting for consideration. So, Madam Chair, I know that there's no give and take in the public comment, so I appreciate the opportunity to introduce myself and introduce the project, and just please ask that, you know, y'all take time to review the PowerPoint that we've got out to your staff. That's it on my end, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Valls. And Ms. Pettis will distribute that to the board. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. There is no other public comment that was registered in advance of the meeting. And so, with that, it is, we're very happy to have some recognitions back on our agenda. We haven't been able to do this for a while, and we've got some outstanding faculty that we get to recognize today. So, I'm going to call on Dr. Eskemia and Dr. John DeHalkum to introduce our outstanding faculty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. DeHalkum will list and introduce the award recipients specifically, but these three individuals are to be commended, to say the least, and are so appreciated. If everyone can mute their mic, I'll be done in 10 seconds. Thank you. So, anyway, again, Dr. Lucy James, Melissa Rollins, Dr. Rob Heatherell are incredible individuals in their own right, and the things that they bring to the quality of instruction and support services at this college are just really, truly priceless. And so, with that being said, I hand the mic over, if you will, to Dr. John DeHalkum to talk about these very prestigious awards for our, members of our Delmar College family.
Thank you. Madam Chair, esteemed Regents, Dr. Eskemia, I'm really honored to present two faculty and one staff who has received recognition for their accomplishments. First, Dr. Lucy James. She's our 2020 Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellence recipient. Dr. Lucy James, Professor of American Sign Language and Interpreting in the college's Communications Languages and Reading Department, is the 2020 Creighton Award recipient, which also makes her the 19th faculty member to receive this prestigious award. The highly coveted Dr. Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellence represents the late educator's legacy as a master teacher and serves as a benchmark faculty must emulate to honor, to receive the honor. Dr. James Portofolio highlighted over 16 years of her dedication to teaching at Delmar College. Her devotion to guiding students is invaluable. Dr. James is the Faculty Coordinator of Assessment, serves on several college committees, including our SACS team, QEP guided pathways, and the Student Learning Steering Committee. Dr. James is also the current Chair of the Board of Directors for the Corpus Christi Deaf. For the past 11 years, she has been a raider for the Advanced and Medical Interpreting Certification Exam for the Texas Board of Evaluation Interpreters. I want to congratulate Dr. James. Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Dr. James if she would like to make a few brief comments.
Yes, of course. Please, Dr. James. It look, appears as if there's not audio connected. Dr. James, I saw that. Thank you.
[laughing].
Well, I appreciate the sign language. Yes, she is saying thank you to all of us. If you've not had a chance to watch the video of her receiving the award that was done at the faculty convocation, I encourage you to do that. I think it's still on the Delmar College Facebook page, so I encourage you to do that. And, Dr. James, on behalf of the Board of Regents, we want to congratulate you. This is an outstanding honor from your peers, and we are so proud to know you. We know you a little bit better than we know some faculty because of your work in helping us through our strategic planning process over the last two years. And so, it was nice to see a face that we are a little bit more familiar with, but we want to congratulate you and thank you for your service to Delmar College.
Yes, right there.
Thank you. Our next person to be recognized is Melissa Rollins. She's the 2019-20 Exempt Counsel Circle of Pride recipient. Melissa Rollins, Retention Case Manager with the college's Retention Services Department, is a 2019-20 recipient of the Circle of Pride Award. The award recognizes employees going above and beyond the scope of responsibilities and duties of her job. Mrs. Rollins was nominated for the support she provided to help complete the faculty credentials report of the SACS reaffirmation process, which involved the audit of over 600 faculty files, and I can tell you firsthand, that is quite a job. There's a lot of things to look at, so we really appreciate her helping to audit that. She willingly accepted this additional task and demonstrated dedication collaborating with the academic deans on the second, and worked on the second phase of this arduous project without interrupting her first priority, and that was to guide students. Mrs. Rollins is a Delmar College graduate and completed her undergraduate and graduate degrees and doctoral hours at Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi. She has been employed by the college for over 17 years in a variety of student counseling intervention recruitment positions and as an adjunct instructor for several departments. Additionally, she is recognized for her volunteer work supporting other institutional projects and community initiatives such as food drives for students, serving on various committees, focusing on the mental health wellness of her students, and implementing methodologies for the successful retention of students to motivate them to earn their degrees. Congratulations, Ms. Rollins. And if she could make a few brief comments, I would appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. So, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the recognition for my participation in the SACS project. It was a great opportunity to learn more about other functional areas of higher education. This project opened my eyes to see past my roles in student engagement and retention and also as an adjunct faculty and to witness a small...
Melissa, I'm sorry, your audio cut out a partway through. About the last third of what you tried to say, we could not hear you. Is audio working? Thank you very much, Ms. Rollins, Dr. Rollins, and on behalf of the, is it doctor yet? I'm sorry. Did I, I want to make sure I used the correct title. Okay, work in progress, then. Mrs. Rollins, thank you so much for your service, 17 years with Delmar College. Wow, that is incredible, and to have a product of our own come back and continue to work with our students is very, just so heartwarming to see. So, on behalf of the Board of Regents, congratulations, and again, thank you for all that you do for our students.
Yes, thank you, Melissa. Our next honor is for Dr. Rob Heatherell. He's Professor of Biology in the college's Natural Science Department. He's a recipient of the Presidential Award in Excellence in Science, Mathematics, and Engineering Mentoring. The recognition includes a $10,000 check from the National Science Foundation, a signed certificate from President Donald Trump, and a trip to Washington, DC for a celebration and professional development and networking activity with other STEM mentors from across the country. This is quite a prestigious award. The award recognizes the critical role of Dr. Heatherell and how he is a mentor outside the traditional classroom setting in the academic and professional development of the future STEM workforce. His colleague, as Dr. Heatherell would be first to acknowledge, Dr. Daisy Song, has been critical in also co-leading the mentoring program at Delmar College. Texas is one of only 13 states with recipients in this award category, and Dr. Heatherell is one of two, representing Texas with the other recipient from the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Heatherell for his accomplishments. Dr. Heatherell, would you like to make a few brief comments?
Dr. Heatherell? Dr. Heatherell, I'm sorry, we cannot hear you.
We are, we're going to ask IT to work with you and see if they can solve the issues, and when they do, we will pause our meeting wherever we're at and allow you to come back in and speak to us because we are so proud of your ongoing dedication to our students and all of the fine work that you have done. Also, a Creighton Award winner in previous years, and so, we do want to hear from you because outstanding faculty is so important to us, and for us to hear directly from you is, this is a great opportunity for that. So, congratulations on behalf of the board, but we want to bring you back in just a few minutes if we can get the IT issues worked out. So, we're going to have somebody from IT contact you and see if we can get that worked out. In the meantime, I saw somebody...
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing us time today to recognize the faculty and staff and their achievements. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. DeHalkum. We're going to have to work out all of those glitches. Everybody's individual systems maybe are a little bit different, and so, we'll make sure that we work that out. The next item on our agenda, it comes directly out of our board retreat from last May, and one of the things that we want to do on a regular basis is to have a student success report, so that while we're recognizing students and recognizing outstanding faculty at just about every meeting when we have the opportunity to do so, we want to start on a regular basis talking about those student success initiatives and what is happening strategically across the campus and across our system. So, I'm going to ask Dr. Eskemia to introduce this first report, and then we'll hear directly from Dr. Silva.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regents, as you know, Project Senda was on, stated several times in the early morning, earlier morning workshop, Project Senda itself was, is derived through our Title V designation as an Hispanic-serving institution, and as such, the team came together at the last round of application for this particular grant through the federal government, and we successfully were awarded, we successfully achieved and were awarded this, these funds for this new grant. Well, the grant isn't just a bucket of resources for, you know, anything, just for any given topic. It's, it has to be very purposely crafted in our application, what our attentions are and those sorts of things. And as such, Project Senda, Senda being word for pathway, falls right in line with our efforts to increase and otherwise bolster our advising infrastructure here at the college. We've been working on this for several years now, and as such, we would like to share with you a little bit about Project Senda and how it has taken on, taken on its own life here at the college. And Dr. Rita Silva is going to talk to us about how Project Senda is impacting our support operations for students. Dr. Silva?
Thank you, Dr. Eskemia. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Regents. Of our first success data point, we'd like to feature Project Senda, as Dr. Eskemia mentioned. This morning, you heard how Project Senda aligned with our strategic plan. This month also marks our first anniversary of the program. In 2019, Delmar College was awarded a five-year, $2.8 million grant by the Department of Education through its Title V HSI program. The objective of the program is to provide uniform training for faculty and staff, decrease time and hours to degree for our students, increase completion, provide financial literacy, and increase the transfer rate. I'm happy to report, in its first year, the program trained 36 faculty members, surpassing the target of 25 set forth in the grant. Along with that, it also trained an additional 15 staff members. The faculty and staff members reached out to 3,078 students enrolled in spring 2020 to check on their educational status and resources needed as part of an initiative they called Project We Care. In total, over 815 hours have been tallied in online advising training, NACADA webinars, and one-to-one consultation by faculty and staffs. The program hired two of the four budgeted embedded advisors in year one. Another advisor will be hired this fall 2020 semester, and the fourth will be hired during year three of the grants. The program's Senda's required first-year evaluation, which was done by Mr. David Trujillo, which is our external evaluator, which he has over 43 years of experience in grants management and has secured over $250 million in grants for colleges and universities throughout the nation. Mr. David Trujillo says this about our Senda grant. Next slide, please. The project is expertly organized, intentionally led, thoroughly executed, and will be regularly evaluated. The project faces a larger number of opportunities than it does impediment, and it is poised to have an overall positive impact on institutional and student success. Thank you, Board, Madam Chair, for letting us talk about the program we're so happy with, Project Senda, and its first-year anniversary and its effect on our students and our staff and our faculty at Delmar College.
Thank you, Dr. Silva. Are there questions from the board?
The problem. Okay.
Thank you very much.
It should, it should be an option.
Can you, we've got somebody who's talking not on mute. There we go. All righty. Thank you again, Dr. Silva. Thank you, Dr. Eskemia. We will move into our President's Report. Dr. Eskemia?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. I have a few words to share, Regents, about our return to campus, and I'd like to talk to you a little bit about how COVID is impacting our operations on the front end of this fall. Again, as I talked about earlier this morning, as I talked about the timing of COVID and where it has overlapped the second half of spring, all the summer, and the beginning of fall, and how different those scenarios are turning out. In every instance, it is surprising us, and I'll get into a little bit of that, but I'd like to start, I've got my words right here. Delmar College continues to operate under Phase Two of our Return to Campus Plan. The college remains close to the public with designated areas open on a limited basis for instruction and testing, and most employees are working remotely. These employees and students who are allowed on, those employees and students who are allowed on campus must follow strict health and safety protocols, including social distancing, wearing of facial coverings, and so forth. Examples of facilities that are open with safety precautions in place are the Barth Learning Resources Center, otherwise known as the Library on West, the Delmar College Bookstore in Harbin, in the Harbin Center. Proctored testing services are being delivered on the first floor of the White Library on the east campus, and that is limited to 30 seats per testing session. Food services are offering limited offerings of food in a grab-and-go kind of format. There's no seating or congregation allowed. The health and safety of everyone coming onto our campus continues to be our foremost priority. Our Return to Campus Committee continues to plan the safe, phased-in resumption of operations across campuses as COVID-19 precautions allow. The fall semester is well underway. The majority of classes are being delivered online. I think the number is about, on a percentage basis, is about 60%, with some being offered in hybrid fashion, as well as some face-to-face formats, especially for those skills-based classes and labs that are necessary for those particular subjects. The Fall 2020 Enrollment continues to be an anomaly. Again, as I was referring to, the tale of the second half of spring, all of summer, and fall are all different stories. You'd think you're talking about three different colleges when you, when you're talking about enrollment and what's happening. Students are choosing to register for fall courses. We're able to do so online and via the college's virtual registration assistance option. Virtual registration assistance was held at the Harbin Student Center on the east campus and at the Coleman Center on west campus, Monday through Saturday, August 10th through the 28th. Students were able to sign in via the Viking virtual line, so that they can wait in their vehicles until they received a text to enter the building. On the inside, students had the option to receive virtual assistance for a variety of services, including registrar, admissions, advising, financial aid, Veterans Affairs, and the business, and the business office and cashier. Over that three-week period, Delmar College staff members were able to assist just over 1,800 students. As of today, our preliminary and uncertified, and I say uncertified enrollment because tomorrow's Census Day, number for the Fall 2020 is approximately 11,200 students, and I say that because that number will change. Through this, though this number is slightly down from 2019, we know there are several factors contributing to this decline. A major contributor is uncertain, to this uncertainty, is the uncertainty caused by COVID-19. Many of our students are also parents, and with virtual learning taking place throughout our K-12 systems at home, many have chosen to sit out a semester and to assist their own children with school. We're seeing that every day. And Regents, let me just say, I'm talking to colleagues, as I've stated earlier this morning, I'm talking to colleagues all over the country, certainly all over the state, and this seems to be the rule everywhere we go, especially with those populations, where the students have their own children that they're having to take care of and assist. I know I see it at my household, and it is no easy task, let me say. Others may have, there's certainly some personal health effects, financial concerns that are being stated, and as we're gathering information, albeit qualitative information from our students, as they're dealing with the issues, and they're being impacted dramatically by the circumstances dealt to our, to our country and beyond from the COVID-19. As we look towards the spring semester, there is hope that the effects we have experienced thus far this semester will improve. And to that end, Regents, I want you to know that, you know, we've, we're not going to stop registering for this fall. We have 150... We have 154 new eight-week sections built for the second eight weeks of fall. And so, we'll be making a push for that enrollment process, the registration process, immediately. In fact, I know people were meeting as, well, as of last week and into this week, in, in an effort to bring those students back, with the timing, with the, with the hopes that while their students, as their students return, as their families and their children return to school, that we will have these eight-week options available to them. Again, we have 154 sections. That is the most number of sections that we've had in any given semester, and we expect and are looking to expand on those options going into next fall. We are building a, as was presented earlier today, we have, we have that as a strategy for the college, and working with AdAstrif from a scheduling standpoint, and working with our academic, our instructional leadership team, we expect that number to grow considerably. Again, it has been a, a most difficult few months, but I have got to take the opportunity, Regents, and I know you all run into our, our employees from different facets of the college throughout the community, but I have got to give my heartfelt thanks. And my, my most sincere gratitude goes to our employees for all the things that they continue to do. This place has not stopped for one minute since March 13th, when things started changing for our, when our world started changing here. And the employees have made all the difference, and the Herculean effort it has taken to get those, and I'm just speaking to the, to the credit side right now, the 11,200 students that we have has been an amazing feat. Next month, we'll be talking about the full set of, of the bigger, broader view for the fall semester of enrollment, including the continuing education group, both dual credit and otherwise. And so, we will have a comprehensive discussion next month, as is regularly planned, to talk about the nuances of, and/or, and, and the challenges that come with that presentation opportunity. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks for now, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there Regents that have questions or comments? Seeing none. I do want to note that Ms. Estrada joined us shortly after we convened, so she, I guess, came in about, you know, 1:03, 1:05, something like that, so I wanted to make that note for the minutes, please. Thank you, Dr. Eskamia. The next item on our agenda is staff report related, two staff reports, one related to our annual overview of the tax abatements that Delmar College has out in the community, and then the second part of that is a discussion on some policy recommendations, some policy revisions related to our tax abatements. So, I would like to thank Ms. Lenora Keys for setting this up for us, and joining us today will also be Mark Culberson from the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation, and we thank Mr. Culberson for joining us as well. I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Keys.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Regents. I appreciate this opportunity. And with us today is Mike Culberson. Mike has, is the Chief Operations Officer at Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation, and he is here with us to make this presentation. Thank you very much, Mike. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mike Culberson. Good afternoon, I'm sorry, this is my second meeting. Good afternoon, Mike Culberson, Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation. Could you give me the next slide, please? I want you to know that I've been in business for a long time. I've been, I have an MBA, I'm a comptroller, I was a CFO, and I am a certified public accountant under the State of Texas. Roland Mallor, actually, the old CEO of EDC, brought me on to do specifically this. My role has expanded as a COO, but this is really what I was brought on to. The EDC, in particular, me, we do compliance reviews for the City of Corpus Christi, for Nuasis County for their tax abatements, for San Patricio County, their tax abatements, and they have a Chapter 381. Delmar College for your tax abatement, San Patricio County, and then the Corpus Christi Business and Job Corporation, the Type A, it's really a Type A and B board now. I also do Chapter 380s for the, for the city. Next slide, please. So, as part of, part of my, what I do is I go in, and once the agreement is signed, I, I have a copy of it, I meet with the company to tell them, hey, these are the things that I am going to need. You know, everybody's all happy, they're, they're smiling, but, you know, in a year or two, or every year after that, I come and make sure that they are in compliance. I review all the requirements. I, I try to use standardized documentation, and what I mean by that is documentation that they do anyway. So, IRS forms 941, 940, and if you're not sure what those are, every quarter, the company has to, has to report to the IRS the amount of taxes, of FICA, the Social Security and Medicare taxes they pay, and also a 940 is what they pay for the entire year, so depending. I get audited financials, I get TWC reports. TWC reports are important. They're Texas Workforce Commission reports, and in these reports, it has who the, who the worker is, the employee, their home address, so I know that they are working, that is a job that is created here and not somebody telecommuting from, from somewhere in New York, or that they have placed headquarter people on the payroll. Now, they can do that, and they can do the virtual while they want, but the only numbers that get counted are the numbers of people who are here working. I review all of the company's assertions, assertions, for example, when they declare themselves construction complete, and that becomes an important part because that happens in the, in the part of the agreement that says, once construction complete, the, the percentage goes down or whatever. I also, just so you know, there are forms that have been required by the State of Texas. I work closely with Nuasis County appraisal district, getting those reports done, and I report their findings to, to the President. Next slide, please. So, let's talk about, right now, okay, there are four in place, but Castleton, which was a great idea, and, you know, there are oilfield service, but on the technical side, so they build things, they actually, valves and things like that. Unfortunately, so, they decided to expand here and put a project here. Right after you had, you had seen the foresight and got them a tax abatement, they were bought by Slumber Jay, and Slumber Jay looked at that and said, no, we're not going to expand in South Texas, we're going to expand somewhere else. So, Castleton never got off the ground, so that's why there's a line through it, and that's the only thing you'll see. So, really, you have M&amp;G, and we'll talk a little bit about that later, so is going to be investing 751 million and 200 jobs. Vistal Pena, which is the docks, you know, they are inside your, your area, taxing area, and they are complete and have done a great job. And now, Epic Y Grade. Epic Y Grade was one that you'd done back a little bit further, but the important thing is that they have completed construction. Next slide, please. All right, so, when we talk about the numbers, so here's what you did. So far, so you did TOPAZ, remember TOPAZ way back when, they were redoing two CP and L power plants. One is Nuasis Bay, which is in the Inner Harbor, and then Barney Davis out there in, in, on the bluff. They completed there, so let's talk about, they, they said that they were going to do 630, they actually invested 900 million. They completed construct, no, they had construction in 2009, and the production start, that is off the books, and it's gone well. M&amp;G, and we'll talk about this in a second, but let me move on. Vistal Pena Docks is 2015, they said they were going to do 56, but they really did 67. They've completed construction, and they're fine. They have somewhere around three more years left on theirs. And then Epic Y Grade. Epic Y Grade, you did in 2017. Now, they have completed construction, and they're about to start production. And that becomes important because then, once they go out of there, they go down to 50%, and so, we'll see where they are, if they, when they do, do construction and do output. And that is a Texas, Texas Railroad Commission, when they start production, there is a report for that, so I can find that report, and, you know, while, while I want to make sure that they do it, you know, the Texas Railroad one, and the TWC report, and the IRS, you know, they can get in a lot of trouble by messing that up. So, let's get back to M&amp;G. M&amp;G Resins, let's keep going. One more, one more slide, please. Let me, let me just talk about this. So, when you talk about net of incentives, and what I want, what I want you to think of is, these are the taxes without investment. This is how much you would have received over a 10-year period for TOPAZ, which is now Talon Energy, M&amp;G, which is just sitting there, Frisco owned it, actually, and it was, that's how much it was sitting there for, so think about that for 10 years. The Vistal Pena Docks didn't even exist, and there weren't any tax, and then Epic. So, with the investment, taxes with the investment, and net of incentives, this is, this is what you got over and above what you forewent on tax abatement, is $30 million. This is how much you would get in the next 10 years, you know. Had you not done this, this tax abatement, and they not come, you'd only received $139,000. Now, when we, when we talk about tax abatements, I know that in New York, when they were talking about bringing Amazon there, Amazon was going to create like $2 billion in taxes, and they were going to get $1 billion in incentives. And I remember the discussion being, well, why don't we use that billion dollars for something else, instead of giving it back to Amazon? Well, the problem is, if Amazon doesn't come, that million dollars, that billion dollars isn't generated, so it's just like zero. So, next slide, please. So, M&amp;G was, went into bankruptcy, and, and they were bought by Alpec, which is one of the largest PET, which is, which is the kind of plastic that you make plastic bottles out of, Endorama and Far Eastern Group, and they were renamed Corpus Christi Polymers. They came in and did a review of the, all of where they were and where they needed to go. They hired the former construction manager, Mr. Mauro from Italy, and, but, because when COVID hit, they have not yet mobilized. So, we're kind of waiting for them and to see where that goes. They still are, have to do the 200 jobs, and we'll see where that goes. So, just so you know, we, we're into legal now, talking about whether, to see how the bankruptcy and all of those go through. I want you to know, they, they've invested, you know, more than they said they were going to do, and it's probably, I don't know how many more hundreds of millions it's going to cost for them to bring that online, but it's, it's a, the nice thing about it is, you know, one of them, the PET is supposed to be closer, so that'll be fine, it'll come up, they'll hire their people. It won't be on the time level we talked about, but they are not getting the, they are not getting all of the, we'll see where they are with the tax abatement. So, I know that, I know, I think this is the second year in a row I've told you to wait, we're taking a look at it, but that's kind of where we are with that. I think the next slide is questions? Next slide? All right. So, I stand by for any questions, and of course, you can always find me at the CCREDC.com, and I have my number and email there. I still think that tax abatement and incentives, especially in this day and age, is going to be more and more important. I want you to realize that while we talk about, hey, you know, we could have all these cyber jobs or things like that, that during COVID, the, the ones that were building, Steel Dynamics, Epic, Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, they continued to hire people, they continued to build their plants, all of the refinery row and all of the pit, the petroleum industries, the port industries of Corpus Christi, they all kept working. Now, some of them weren't from home, but they kept going. These are the kind of jobs that are important, that people can make a career out of, that they can raise a family out of, and it becomes really important, and spoiler, Corpus Christi is not going to be a million people. It's just, we're just never going to get there. But having these kind of, these kind of jobs are what is going to get us to slowly grow, we've grown at 1%, is slowly going to get us into the, you know, like, when we hit 300,000, Dick's came, Corner Bakery came, and when we hit 400,000, you may see a target, you may, things like that. So, thank you for your time. I stand by to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Culberson. I'd like to note that Dr. Adami has arrived, and offer the opportunity for any of our Regents to ask questions of Mr. Culberson. Any comments? Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming back every year to do this for us. It is good to keep this in front of us and keep us reviewing this on a regular basis, so we appreciate your time today, and I know you were double booked, so we appreciate your, your flexibility, and hope your next meeting goes just as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I was just getting ready to call, Dr. Heatherell had joined us, and I was just getting ready to call on him again, and he must not have been able to wait. Oh, he's still there? Okay, caller six, so we're, so Ms. Keys, we're going to ask you to pause for just a second on the next item, and we're going to bring back Dr. Heatherell and ask if he would like to make any comments regarding his award. Dr. Heatherell, are you, are you muted on your phone line? Dr. Heatherell, third time? Okay, well, please pass on to him again our congratulations, and I apologize for the technical difficulties. We'll have to, to work on these for the future, won't we? All right, Mrs. Keys, we're going to ask you to continue the discussion under staff reports, so this, this is a policy discussion, and for us to give some direction to staff, and they'll bring it back for action at a future board meeting. Mrs. Keys?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, Regents, Regent Scott. Appreciate it, and the, the presentation that Mike Culberson just provided, I think is a great introduction to where we are. Augie Rivera and I have worked on this with the bigger staff law firm, including David Mendez and Manuel Mendez, and what we're sharing with you today is a draft version of a proposed abatement policy that will come back to, to you in a future date. So, this is provided as a reference to give you an opportunity to read through it, so that when we do come to make a presentation and possibly a recommendation, that you've had the opportunity to read it. However, I would like to provide some background at this time, and a few of the highlights of this policy. Last November, the Board approved Policy 4.37, which was our tax increment financing plan, and that policy has been in effect for basically the last year. At that point in time, you did ask that we prepare a tax abatement policy, which up to this point is not in our policy manual, even though, as you've seen, we have participated in tax abatements in the past, and according to Chapter 312 of the Tax Code. So, but this would be formalizing the policy, the policy itself. As background, this would be authorized under Chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code, and that Delmar College District has elected to become an eligible participant in tax abatement projects in reinvestment zones, which may be created from time to time by counties or cities in the taxing jurisdiction of the district. And the Board, at your sole discretion, whether, is to whether or not the, the district would participate in any tax abatement. We would also always consider compliance, and if we move on to page three, Jessica, of the document. Here we go. Thank you. This shows- This shows, begins to show the minimum criteria that any abatement document would require before administration could review it and possibly bring it to the board. This would include that it would have to have authorized facilities. There would have to be creation of new and additional values. There would be new expansion, could be new or expansion of existing facilities. And it would have to be eligible property. And the value and term of the abatement would have to be identified. Additionally, there would be covered area that happened to be located within the district. The projected increase of appraised property values would be shown through an economic impact study. There would have to be creation of more jobs. Now, this would be by contractual agreement as required by Delmar. And there would have to be no adverse impact on existing facilities. In addition, other requirements pursuant to policy would regard scope, term, and amount of abatement. Also, the draft proposal for the tax abatement would have an application process that would come to us as the college. And this begins on page five of the draft. There is agreement execution document. There's also an enclosed, it includes a recapture clause and administrative responsibilities. An assignment would be based on the, totally upon the board's discretion. There is also a sunset provision that is provided within this policy. So those are the review of those broader scopes. Ideally, the college administration would receive this request or this application. We would do an analysis, and then we would come to you as a board and make a presentation as to your discernment and your decision-making. And upon that time, if there were to be an abatement request. At this point in time, I do not know, there's not one that's pending. So this draft policy is provided for your consideration just to review and then to possibly bring forward with revisions and discussion at another board meeting.
So Ms. Keys?
Are there any questions or comments at this point?
Ms. Keys, I think I misspoke. I thought there were actual changes. This is just a recap of our existing policy, correct?
No, ma'am. We do not have existing policy that covers abatement at this point.
Okay.
We implemented the Tax Increment Financing Plan last November for a TURS, basically. And at that point in time, you requested that we prepare an abatement policy. And it was put on the pending list for this month.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping me recall what we said, because there's been a lot, there's been a lot of this. So a reinvestment zone here is defined differently than the TURS, which you just referenced, the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. So while the language is similar, these are two separate reinvestment zones that we are talking about. Therefore, two separate policies related to those.
Yes, ma'am. This is actually under Chapter 312, then the of the Tax Code. And then the TURS is more under Chapter 311. So they're two similar but fundamentally different tools that we have.
Are there other comments or questions for Ms. Keys? Are we comfortable with the policy as drafted and ready for it to come back for an action item at a future meeting? Hearing nothing negative. I've been reading facial expressions and body language over web. Go to meeting is not easy, but I'm going to assume that we all concur that we are ready for this to be brought back as an action item at a future meeting.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our pending item list. We have several things, as we've referenced earlier in the day today and then earlier in the meeting this afternoon, of things that are coming before us in October. We'll have a more comprehensive enrollment update as we do every year in October. We're going to have a discussion around our service area analysis. And then some quarterly financial reports. We'll talk a little bit later today about the RFQ for our internal auditors. So we hope to have that come back as an action item in October. Sorry, we've got a duplicate there. Internal audit report to the board, legislative update, and the Cleary data. And then in November, you'll see we're going to be doing some discussion on Delmar College's steps in compliance with the coordinating board's 60 by 30 plan. Have another in our ongoing discussions about the potential for residential or campus housing. Talk about distance learning and other updates in November. Included in that, and then coming up again, will be our Saks and QEP updates. And then in December, our strategic enrollment and marketing plan, foundation yearly update, et cetera. Any questions or items that you think we're missing from our pending business list? Seeing none, we will move ahead with our consent agenda. Under our consent agenda, we have approval of minutes for our called meeting August 3rd, August 11th, and acceptance of investments reports and financials in August and July, respectively. Are there any items that need to be pulled for separate consideration? If not, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda items as presented?
I saw.
We'll have a motion from Ms. Estrada and a second by Dr. Sherwood. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. Thank you very much. Moving on to our regular agenda item, we are going to start with a discussion and possible action related to a change order for the South Campus. I'm going to ask Dr. Eskamia to introduce this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Strabos is joining us and joining this conversation for an update and a discussion for your possible consideration around a change order. Typically, change orders come in various forms, and this one is no different. But what we would say is, what I would say is that this change is a, comes from a positive perspective. It comes from positive progress on the South Campus. And it has to do with a feature that I would say is related to, to a necessary feature at the South Campus that provides for the rough outdoor environments. And it's around a trellis that was designed. And so that being said, as such, Mr. Strabos, are you with us? I think I see you there with your?
Yes, yes, I am.
With your black and gold on? Go ahead and get us started, Mr. Strabos.
All right, thank you, Regents. So next slide, please. I'm going to start off giving you an update on the project as a whole. If you haven't been out by there, you can see it. It's, they're blowing like, blowing, going like crazy. On the slide that you see on the right-hand side is Rodfield Road. On the bottom is Yorktown Road. The address, 7002 Yorktown. So you can plug it in. There's a lot of construction going on. Rodfield Road is closed at the current time, so it can be a challenge to get there. And you see in the middle of the property, this is what's under construction now. You see a parking lot to the right that is there now being used as a temporary parking. You see the Culinary Arts Building is just to the left of it. And then you see the STEM Building is towards the top, and the main building is to the left, and more parking and the fiscal plant above that. And you see the bridge, on the far left is, in cooperation with the City of Corpus Christi, they will be installing a pedestrian bridge across the drainage ditch. Next slide, please. Couple of photos of the project itself. You see the STEM Building on the left-hand side. And you see the main building on the right-hand side. You can see the construction going on. They're putting up the studs, the sheet rock on the exterior and the interior of the STEM Building. So they're really making good progress on the building, project itself. Next slide, please. Here's a rendering of the project as a whole, the completed part of it. You see the main building on the left, STEM Building in the center, and kind of the first part of the Culinary Arts Building on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. Here's an additional rendering showing the water feature that currently is not part of the project. We'll be talking about that soon, not today. Next slide, please. Here's an overview of the project and its schedule itself. Detailed design began July of 2018. Central Plant Construction started in July of 2019. And it's about an 8,000-square-foot building. The Central Plant is scheduled to be substantially complete March of 2022, when it comes online with the STEM Building itself. STEM Building Construction started November of 2019. Little more than 100,000 gross square feet. The Culinary Arts Building started July of 2022. It's a little bit less than 60,000 gross square feet. And the main building also started, the main building substantial completion is July of '22. Class is starting in the fall of 2022 in the STEM Building and Culinary Arts, the main building, in the spring of 2023. And we're looking at almost 250,000 gross square feet of space. Next slide, please. An overall summary of the budget. Your bond is $139 million. Working with finance, the finance has been able to earn almost $3 million in interest income. That's through July 28th, 2020. So the total funds available, almost $142 million. The expenditures through July 28th, the consultants, right at $9 million. The construction, $23.5 million. Total, $32.5 million that have been expended so far. Next slide, please. When you keep that in perspective, the total construction budget right now is 100, right at $116 million, with $23.5 million built for. We're about 20% complete, that is as of July. So we've got another month's worth of work that has occurred since then. Next slide, please. What we're talking about, this change order is a trellis addition to the main building. It's an architectural enhancement that will improve the outdoor learning environment of the campus, just providing digital shade in South Texas is going to be a big help. It's going to improve the ability to effectively and efficiently make use of the outdoor space. And that's becoming increasingly important as we work through this COVID-19. Next slide, please. So the original contract amount for the Central Plant is $9,250,000. There have been some changes in scope, but there are cost savings. The net change order is a deduction to the Central Plant of $62,802. So the adjusted contract amount for the Central Plant will be $9,184,780. Next slide, please. For the trellis addition, which is part of the Package II, the current contract amount is $106,742,488. The addition for the trellis and the additional work, $876,936. So the adjusted contract amount is $107,619,424. That change order will be funded partly in the $62,802 from the deduct change order from the Central Plant, and then use $814,134 from the interest income. So that total change order to the Package II, $876,936. Next slide, please. And that concludes that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Strabos. Let's talk about that 2016 bond interest income, the 2.9 million. And talk about where that came from, because that's where we're going to have an opportunity for this change order, potentially others.
Well, in general, and finance can answer this better, but when you sell the bonds, the funds literally go into a bank account. And ideally, finance would invest them in an interest-bearing account. And they have a variety of tools that are available to them that they can use to do that. And of course, while the interest rates have historically been at all-time lows, both if you're borrowing money as well as if you're trying to invest it. But we have a significant sum, and so over the past couple of years, it's been able to earn that kind of money and continue to earn interest income. I know finance is being very diligent and astute about how they invest the funds to minimize risk yet to optimize the amount that is returned on the investment.
Mr. Garcia, I know that you're listening. Do you have anything to add to that explanation?
Yeah, you know, as you probably already know, we already have a very good partnership with an investment firm that has done a very good job in working with us and maximizing our yields. And so we've been very fortunate up until the COVID-19 crisis that the yields were very strong in the last 12 months. I think that's where you will see the largest yield earnings in the bond funding that we received on the bond issuance over the last couple of years. So thank you to Dr. West and a third-party investment company who have really done a wonderful job in not only maximizing our yields, but also making sure that the principal values are very, that are safeguarded in a very low-risk type of investments. And so this is what you see today. Can't guarantee that you're going to see the same results over the next 12 months, but we shall see. It all depends on how quickly we burn the cash and how quickly the stock market turns around.
And so when we estimate what our construction dollars are going to be coming out of a bond, as we look at a bond election, we estimate that very conservatively. And in this case, our conservative estimates paid off because we ended up with a higher return on those bonds during the interest income than we anticipated. Is that the layman's way of saying it?
Yes, that's definitely correct. I would have to agree with that, with those terms, absolutely.
Thank you, I apologize. I don't know what that's coming from, but we've got a.
I'm sorry, that's me at my finest cooking. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's you. Okay. Well, I see Dr. Sherwood and I think Regent Avert both have questions. Dr. Sherwood? Oh, sorry, your mic was on. Okay, Regent Avert, you go first.
I think you've answered my question. But my question was, in layman's terms, the interest income is wonderful. Great job to everybody involved in making that happen. But I'm assuming that we had no prior plan for that income. Or as Regent Scott said, perhaps we were so conservative with our estimate of what that income may be, that this indeed is additional dollars that we didn't have budgeted in any way for this project. Is that correct?
So I'll start that, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Eskamia. So when we got the bids back on the South Campus, there were a number of things that we took out of the project when we were looking at construction dollars that were way over what was estimated by the architects. And so the trellis, and you'll see some other things, there were some big-ticket items that were cut out of the project. So, and Dr. Eskamia, I'll let you further explain.
Yeah, and so as such, with the trellis and a couple, and several other items, including a sky bridge that was non-instructional space, we took significant amount of attributes out of the base bid. We knew that when we had, we would have these smaller items, such as the trellis and such as the water features and other possibility, perhaps, down the road. We knew that when we removed those, that if the project went ahead, as planned or better, that we might have an opportunity if these, if interests kind of fell in place and some good progress in the project. So John, if you jump back in, talk about that progress again. The project overall is moving ahead quite well. Would you talk a little bit about that progress as well that contributed in addition to the interest?
So you've seen some of the photos, and if you've driven by that, you've seen the work the contractors making. So part of what happens is, there's, can be a significant amount of risk at the beginning of a project, literally for unforeseen site conditions. They're drilling foundations, they're driving the piers. Lot of risk there. They're well past that stage. They're 20% into the project. And so a lot of the risk for unforeseen site conditions or other problems could go wrong with the design and construction. We've passed that stage. So we're at a point now, given that we have this interest income, we can take advantage of it and start looking at these types of features that we just couldn't include at the beginning. And now we can start to bring them back into the project.
Mr. Bennett?
I've got a question. We originally had that trellis in there. And then we took it out to accommodate. We originally had that trellis in there, and then we took it out to accommodate the adjusted bid. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, sir, it was removed.
How much was it removed at? What was the price that was taken out?
The estimate at the time was approximately $700,000, if I'm not mistaken. I don't have that in front of me.
But then we're putting it back in as a change order at a rate that's much higher than what we took it out at.
This is John Strabos. There's additional work that has been identified by the architects as they're preparing the design documents for the main building, and so $700,000 of this is for the trellis, but then we have other additional work. And to ensure that the trellis could be put in cost-effectively, the foundations for the trellis were installed at the same time they were putting the trellis, they were putting the foundations for the culinary arts building and the other main building. So we've worked with a contractor to be cost-effective in this actual installation.
I understand that. I'm just concerned that we took a whole bunch of things out, and now we're putting them back incrementally at a higher rate. I realize this is the first one, but are there more to come? And I think the answer is yes, there are more to come. And are they coming in at a higher rate than what we took them out at?
We will evaluate them before we bring them to you, so we'll have very clear answers on that. It is possible because of change in construction from a year ago and just how the overall construction market, how it's impacting, so part of the pricing has changed some, but before we bring them to you, we'll have much more information when and if there are other items. A good example is, can we add back in the water feature, and what's that going to cost, and where should the money be invested?
And what's our contingency on this $107 million project? How much do we have in contingency?
Go ahead, John.
So from the overall budget, we've got approximately $10 million set aside within the existing budget to cover a variety of just, and so what happened is, we have not, you have the allocated contract, which is the funds that have been awarded of the $139 million. So you've got the 115 million for the construction, and then we've got the design contracts that have been awarded. We've got ballpark about $10 million reserved in contingency for the project.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I apologize. So to fully answer that question, Mr. Strabos and Dr. Eskimia, could you do a follow-up communication to the board showing us the original, what we took out for that trellis, again, what you're putting back in, and that miscellaneous items that the architect has identified that you have scooped into this change order, if you could outline, again, apples-to-apples comparison, trellis-to-trellis, and then the other miscellaneous. And I'm certainly okay in understanding that as you get into it, architects might identify some additional items, but I think that apples-to-apples comparison that Mr. Bennett asked for is a valid piece of information for us.
Yes, we'll provide that information.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Are there other questions or comments? This action does come with a recommendation from staff to approve this change order as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
I move that we accept the change order.
Thank you, Dr. Sherwood. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchison. Are there any other questions from the board? We will take a roll call vote. Dr. Adami?
Yes.
Vote yes. Thank you. Vote yes or no. Regent Avert?
Yes.
Regent Bennett?
Yes.
Regent Estrada?
Yes.
Regent Hutchison?
Yes.
Regent Sherwood?
Yes.
I'm Regent Scott. I vote yes. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Strabos, for that work. We're going to call on you to continue. Item number five is discussion and possible action related to engineering and architectural services to support various college projects.
So you've heard earlier this morning from the workshop about renovations to various buildings and the importance of new construction. Next slide, please. So you have, this ties into the 2014 bond projects. You've seen this list most recently. It's about our completed projects. You have the central plant, Richardson Auditorium, Ventnor's Fire Alarm, the master plant for the south, the general academic music building, workforce development center, emergency technology. About 62% of your 2014 bond is complete. Next slide, please. But that means we have another about 38% left to be complete. These are several different projects. The pilot plant project, it's under construction now, fine arts music building renovation, Harvin Student Center renovation, re-roofing projects, Heldenfeld renovation, Memorial Classroom building renovation, the White Library renovation, Heritage Hall demolition, general purpose building renovation, not demolition, renovation, west campus paving, asphalt signage, east campus edge signage, lighting, and then you have contingency for those projects as well. So we've got about $60 million worth of 2014 bond projects that we need to begin the design and start the construction. Next slide, please. So we've got a preliminary schedule in which we're selecting architects, and this is calendar year quarters, not fiscal year quarters. And so just kind of a cutted a schedule for how we can proceed with these projects. And Heldenfeld's renovation cannot start till we move into the renovated Memorial Building. Next slide, please. So our next steps then, and this is what we're talking about today, using this indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity request for qualifications. It's RFQ number 201920 for architectural and engineering services to support various Delmar College projects, to identify projects, architects, and engineers. This solicitation was advertised a year ago in August of 2019, and in accordance with state procurement processes for professional services, it's a two-step process. The step one is which you advertise, and then select architects and engineers based on qualifications, and then the next step is negotiate the fees. And so after we do the selections, which is what this action item is about, then the architects and engineers will prepare the construction documents for these projects. Next slide, please. Our bond project then, we've got the space program is complete. We're defining the projects for the scope of work for the other projects, ready to begin design work and start working as best as abatement. Next slide, please. We have some recommended firms for different projects, and some of these are just generic, to-be-identified projects. Amtech and WKMC for re-roofing projects, facility programming, just space programming, demographic studies, so specific projects are to be determined. Jignac Architects and L&amp;B with NRG Engineering for Architect Engineering for the Memorial Classroom Building renovation, the Harvin Student Center renovation, and the general purpose building renovation. We're looking to package these built projects together so we can get better pricing on these. Looking at Fluger Architects with Jignac Landscape Architecture for the east and west campus edge projects. Next slide, please. Richter Architects for the Heldenfeld renovation, rock engineering, projects to be determined, Striddy Callens Mechanical Engineering to be determined, Terricon Projects to be determined, Turner Ramirez Architects for Architect Engineering for the White Library renovation, the Fine Arts renovation, and then Urban Engineering for Civil Engineering Services for projects to be determined. Next slide, please. And so those are the recommendations based on the submittals from the firms who submitted. And this is indefinite, except for the projects that are specifically listed, it is indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity type work, that project assignments are made based on needs and funding availability.
Questions or comments from the board for Mr. Strabos or Dr. Eskimia? This item does require an action from the board to adopt the selection of consultants as recommended by staff. Is there a motion to proceed?
It's a move.
Thank you, Dr. Adami. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Estrada. Are there any questions? If not, we'll do a roll call vote in reverse order. Dr. Sherwood? Ms. Hutchison?
Yes.
Ms. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Avert?
Yes.
Dr. Adami?
Yes.
Carol Scott, I vote yes. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we're going to have a discussion regarding some draft language and direction for Ms. McDonald in our internal audit services RFQ process. Dr. Eskimia, do you have any opening comments or straight to Ms. McDonald?
Right to Ms. McDonald, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Tammy?
Thank you. Our current engagement agreement for internal audit services that was initiated in July of 2015 will expire February 28th of 2021, with no additional renewal options available per the original terms of the 2015 RFQ. The college is in the process of developing a request for qualifications to continue internal audit services. The internal audit service provider has a reporting line to both the president/CEO and the board of regents. Staff is seeking input and direction from the board for RFQ content in the following areas: the service overview, the scope of work, the evaluation and criteria, and the term or the length of the engagement. So today, for board review and discussion, and I also have it as an action item, so if the board is comfortable with what we end up with today, you can take action if you so please. If not, then we can collect your input today and bring the RFQ draft content back to the board at a subsequent meeting, whichever the board decides. I don't know if, I don't see it on my screen, I don't know if they can bring up the actual document that's in, can y'all see the document that was in the board materials?
It's page 95 of the board materials, Jessica. She'll bring it up. There we go.
There you go. So as I said, you know, the actual RFQ, the full document, it's well over 20, 25 pages. So for the purpose of our discussion today, you know, a lot of the content for the complete RFQ has very standard procurement rules based on what procurement regulations are for the state procurement, and also has some very standard language for the college, some things we aren't going to talk about, because those are either prescribed by procurement statutes or by our RFQ process, which is we establish who's the contact person for the college, what are the instructions, how many copies are that you have to provide, what are the instructions, what does your submission look like, how many tabs does it have to have? So those type of things are already prescribed. So those things, and there are particular documents that have to be completed, like the basic information about the firm and disclosure statements, and all of those attachments that we don't change, because that's part of, like I said, either the college's procurement process or the state prescribed process for procurement. So those, we won't talk about today, because those are very standard, the standard language of things that we have to have in our processes. But what we will talk about today is, we'll go right into the first area, I think you have it up on your screen, the draft, is the overview. This is pretty standard, it was included in our last, like I said, 2015 RFQ. It's what activities are expected. So we lay out for the purpose of the respondent that it will go over internal controls over processes for financial, student services, campus operations, administrative, and also follow-ups from prior years upon request. So it does include looking at some of the follow-ups from prior years and any new initiated work, internal controls over financial reporting, and internal controls over safeguarding assets. And then, of course, in this section right below it, we would put, once we do determine a release date, then we would put all the following schedule, you know, the release and when things are due, and all those standard schedule timelines would be inserted for that piece. So on the overview, are there any questions or any input or anything that you would like to look at differently? As far as, this is just the overall overview of the services where we're looking at. Okay, if not, then we'll go ahead and move into this number two, which will be the scope of work. So again, it's standard language about the college is looking for internal audit function to utilize a risk-based approach. What the selected firm would provide would be the following functions and services, included but not limited to operational, financial, student services, administrative compliance, risk, and internal control reviews of systems, functions, and programs as coordinated by Vice President Administration and Human Resources in consult with the college president/CEO. The selected firm will work closely with the VP/HR, but will have, the firm will have a direct reporting relationship to the Board of Regents and the president/CEO of the college. And then it talks about the selected firm, this is standard language that we had in our last RFQ, about if they had to subcontract a portion of the work out, then it kind of tells them the rules they have to follow, but that the firm is still the primary contact and reports out to Dr. Eskimia and the board. So any questions on the scope of work overview?
On the dual reporting, that's always difficult for an internal auditor to audit the president if he reports to the president. That's why historically, the internal auditor reports directly to the Board of Directors, or the Board of Regents in this case.
Again, that's something for the board to discuss. I'm going by what we had previously used, so that would be something that Dr. Eskimia and the board would address and provide me direction.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions on that regard? Okay.
This is Mary. That sort of is the practice that I'm familiar with, that there's a direct line from the internal auditors to the board.
So by, so in the A&amp;M system, there is not a direct line to the president, it is only to the board, or, of course, in the system, they have their own system staff as well?
Right. Well, they have an internal audit staff that operates sort of independently of the administration, and they have a dotted line to the chancellor, but the direct line is to the regents.
That's the arrangement that is intended here and that exists. It is a dotted line to me for the purposes of facilitating and being that facilitator to communicate. It essentially is that straight line, not essentially, it is that straight line to the board, so if there's any confusion about that, it's not meant to be that way. I am but a processor of information, I'm a messenger more than anything in that whole process. So it is, what you're saying, Dr. Sherwood, the same, it is intended to be the same as that arrangement there that you're familiar with, with the A&amp;M system. So if we need to make that clear, just to make it clear, I don't, I have, I concur, I want to facilitate that sort of thing. It's just that there's somebody that they've got to call on a regular basis, and that's what I'm there for.
Right, right.
And I'm familiar with it through for-profit institutions, not, I haven't done a lot with not-for-profit institutions, but it is a direct line, and there is a dotted line to the chief executive.
Yes, and that is my understanding of the way things have been arranged from the get-go. If it's being misunderstood or miswritten or miscommunicated from our standpoint, that is not intentional, so we know that...
Can I work on identifying that, sir?
Yeah, yeah, because we know the board, this is a board, a board function, and we understand that, and I'm here to facilitate that.
So that sentence could potentially read, "The selected firm will work closely with the president/CEO of the college and the VP/HR, but will have a direct reporting relationship to the Board of Regents." Is that...
Whatever's necessary for more clarity, Madam Chair. So absolutely. And just for y'all's understanding, just know that that's the way it has been operating, okay? They go through me to you all, we facilitate, we do all the work, we do everything we can to tee them up, to make sure that they're here and that they're understanding things. And, you know, but back to the college, when they're reporting back to the college, they go through me, as you would expect, because I ultimately am responsible for any of the products for the administrative side. So from that point, that's that dotted line that goes through me to the rest of the college. Now, in the case where, you know, they're going to look at my operation specifically, my job description and/or performance and/or whatever the case, then I would definitely see where it would not go through me.
Right.
Excuse me, this is Dr. Barka. I'm on the Board of Ronald McDonald House, and our program that we do have there is exactly what we're talking about here. The auditor communicates directly with us as members of the Board, but Michelle Horine, who is the Executive Director, has a dotted connection to her, says she's there every day and facilitates communications. Forgive me for my intrusion.
Thank you, Dr. Barka.
Thank you.
All right, okay, with that clarity, we can move on.
Okay, thank you. And then the next section, it just talks about the high level of excellence as far as the quality of work and the services that are to be provided, if we can go on to the top of the, there you go, the top of that page, and their capabilities, and that's from our last RFQ that was issued, and it's pretty standard language on the level of service and excellence that we would require the respondent to have and their capabilities. So do we have any questions on Section B, which talks about their excellence or their capabilities for the responding firm? The personnel, you know, the expectations of the personnel that are assigned, their business capabilities, it just kind of gives a structure of what our expectations are.
You just keep on going, and if I see questions from the Board, I'll stop you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The experience and resources that we're asking for, you know, it's minimum five years, of course, being familiar with GAAP accounting principles, must have CPA or CIA, which is, you know, the professional designation certifications, and then, of course, be familiar with Texas government codes, and then auditing expertise and services provided to similar Texas community colleges. So does that section with the experience requirement, does that meet your expectations?
I'll let you go ahead and finish all of Number Two, and then we'll come back if there's any questions in all of Number Two.
Okay, thank you. Then the internal audit team, they must have proficient staffing resources, so that just tells them that we do expect them to assign us a proficient team, and that they must have sufficient qualifications in the areas of experience, education, professional credentials. So I know in the past, when we had different teams, we've had different teams that came in and audited different functions within the college, so those teams could look very different. So if they're going to be auditing financial aid, then we would want someone who has expertise in that area. If they are going to be auditing human resources, then we would want someone who has expertise in that area. So that's what that section means about their internal auditing team. And then internal audit and compliance services, again, that's standard language about expectations to identify significant risks, internal control weaknesses pertaining to our business processes, including not limited to, and then that will refer back to the overview section when we do get the full document numbers. So that's why you might see some question marks or X's within this document, it means I have to go back and align it with the proper sections. And then it talks about assurance about internal control systems, assurance that significant financial managerial operational information is accurate, reliable, and timely. So again, that just lays out the expectations of the work that's performed. And then the section F, the startup and communication, this is standard language from our last issuance of the RFQ in 2015. It lays out the efficient, effective plan to establish a successful engagement, assist the Board and the college president, CEO, in exercising their oversight responsibilities, and then working with the Board and president, what that will include. It's meeting with and reporting to the Board, at least on a quarterly basis, presenting a yearly risk assessment and corresponding internal audit schedule, typically that's presented in August, present an annual report to the Board, and submit report in compliance with the Texas State Auditor's Office, which we will have that actually, that will be coming to you in October for our current engagement, providing the Board a copy of the institution's plan of action as a result of any internal audit examination, including a schedule to ensure implementation of corrective actions and recommendations. Those are the reports that are presented to you with the findings and the action plans for those remedy in those findings. Should possess knowledge and sharing tools of information within the firm, with the college, and various stakeholders, and will be required to assist the college at the end of contract or engagement transition, if that occurs. So any questions or input or anything on Number Two, any of the lettering in Number Two?
Related to the startup and communication, given that we adopted an annual plan already, correct? Am I remembering that correctly? So they would start with our existing annual plan, correct?
Yes, and I believe it's mentioned that it is time for us to do another, what we call a global risk assessment of the college as a whole, so that would also be performed in the near future, and then it would pick up that work and look at that work and not necessarily repeat work. So it would be using what we currently have as a place to start, so we would not be duplicated any efforts as we move forward.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on Section Two? Let's move on to Section Three and kind of move through that quickly if we can.
Yes. So the valuation and criteria, again, this is standard language about how the college will evaluate the statement of qualifications. It's, like I said, it's standard language. One thing I will point out is, and it kind of gives a global view of the valuation method that it will be looked at for, the selection from the valuation team will be through discussions, investigations, findings, compliance checks, and selecting the respondent for interviews, and then make recommendations to the Regents, and then, of course, there will be negotiations to, after the Regents make that, after the recommendation is approved by the Regents, then, you know, no negotiations will start as far as the final engagement language, or, of course, any type of fees. For an RFQ, that comes after the fact, the fee negotiations. The valuation team, so the SOQs will be reviewed by an evaluation team to evaluate each respondent's capability to best meet the needs of the college and the needs and objectives. The team will be comprised of key representatives of the college and other persons selected by the college. And then, of course, a representative from purchasing always acts as part of the committee for, makes sure we're going in compliance with our processes, but they are a non-voting member of the valuation team. The RFQ compliance check, so again, it goes by the minimum requirements, usually the purchasing department looks at to make sure that it meets the minimum requirements, because if a submission does not, then it does not get moved forward to the valuation team. So that's pretty standard. And then it lays out that there could be, at the discretion of the college, any or all the following interviews may occur from the respondent, so it's an interview with the valuation committee is mandatory, and then it could be interviewed with the administrative staff if desired by the college. So that's the standard language we had in from the last release. Now, this is one section I do, I'm requesting your input, is the evaluation criteria. We're going to insert the standard language that we put in there for the criteria, but what I'm specifically looking for are the areas of importance to use in the scoring, which we don't really publish that before we release the document, is the actual scoring information, but the actual areas that are important to the Board to use when we are developing that matrix in the scoring. So that we need to add some of the information, input from the Board for what we would include in developing the scoring matrix. And then it goes on down to talk about the purpose of the request, of course, to provide those services for us, which we've gone over, kind of repeats that information, and it has to be performed by a certain level of professionals. And then the general terms and conditions, there's a lot of standard language in this section, but the one thing I wanted to point out is the draft that I put here was, since the college fiscal year ends in August, we wish to enter into a one-time agreement covering the period of March 1st of 2021 through August 31st of 2022, because we need to get it back on that fiscal year, because that's when our reporting requirements to the state are all by fiscal year, so we want to get it back on track. And the contract engagement may be renewed on an annual basis upon written agreement by both parties for four additional one-year renewals, not to exceed fiscal year ending August 31st, 2026. So that section and the criteria sections are the two that I would like to ask your input.
Now, their reporting requirement is as of year end? Is that correct?
It's as of fiscal year end, the State Auditor's Office, their annual report is for the fiscal year, so it would be ending August 31st, and it's due to the State Auditor's Office by, at the latest, November 1st, and we have to have it posted on our website by November 1st. So yes, it's fiscal.
So if the contract ends on August 31st, they don't have time to prepare the report, then?
Well, they have, you know, if we engage anyone to do work, and you've already engaged in that work, the work can exceed the end of that, and I'll defer to general counsel, the work can exceed the contract period, it's just the work they perform up to the end of the contract period, and then they would be required to do the annual report for that year.
Okay, I just want to make sure we don't cut them off accidentally before they file the report.
No, sir, we'll make sure that our reports are filed timely.
Thank you.
So regarding the specific question on evaluation criteria, other than what you've listed in terms of qualifications and CPA and experience and all those kinds of things, I would think experience in higher education would need to be prioritized, because there can be internal auditing that, from another industry, that may inform us, but I think that there is something in higher education related to tuition and grants and all kinds of things that might be financial aid, that I would think that that experience would be helpful. Tell me if I'm wrong in making that assumption, but other than what you've outlined, that might be of interest to me. Do others have any feedback on her question about evaluation criteria? Okay.
So typically, other things is the firm's capabilities, you look at what they've submitted as part of their requirements and the services and the team members that they provide. So some of the standards will be their capabilities, their depth and breadth of their services, their people, and then, like you just alluded to, the experience in higher ed, like you said, would be one that would be of importance to you or to the college to look at, and then the qualifications of the firm. So is there any other information you want to make sure that we do have, include, or highlight in when we develop the scoring matrix?
Do you include standard language around the team that's actually assigned versus the experience of the company or the firm overall?
Yes, and part of the RFQ, we do ask them that they do have to identify the team members that they would be assigning. Of course, it would be our primary contacts and representatives. We have, you know, different team members, and then they would have to provide us with their qualifications. Now, down the road, if we have an internal audit that we're doing in a specific area that requires a very specific expertise or experience, then that exact team member may not be on the list, but then it's covered in another section of the RFQ where it says you will provide us with the most qualified, best qualified and experienced in the area that we are going to be auditing. So it's covered in a general section, and then they're also required to provide us with very specific team member names that will be assigned to us and their qualifications.
Right. Other comments? Do we, are we comfortable with staff moving forward with the RFP? If so, I'd like to propose a motion to authorize staff to develop the final RFP based on feedback today and to, what's the word I'm looking for? To solicit responses to that RFQ in a timely fashion.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any further discussion related to that motion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Adami, vote yes or no?
Yes.
Regent Everett?
Yes.
Regent Bennett?
Yes.
Regent Estrada?
Yes.
Regent Hutchinson?
Yes.
Dr. Sherwood?
Yes.
This is Carol Scott, I vote yes, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your work on that, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing the results of it. Item number seven is related to the appointment for TERS number two, the Packery Channel Tours. Regent Rivas served as our representative to that TERS Board for a number of years, I think since its inception. I have asked Dr. Sherwood, as the District Four rep, if she would be willing to serve the remainder of that term until a new District Four rep is elected, and then potentially that individual might take over that position, and she has agreed to do so. So unless anyone is chomping at the bit to take that from her, I would entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Mary Sherwood as our representative to the TERS number two Packery Channel Board.
I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Estrada.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson.
And I would say-
And thank you, Dr. Sherwood, for your agreement to fill that unexpired term. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign? Thank you again, Dr. Sherwood, that motion passes. We're now going to go into closed session, so allow me to read this language, and then we'll empty the room. Closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.089 regarding security assessments, deployments, or audits related to information, resources, technology, or the design, operation, or defense of a computer network, certain network security information, the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices, or information confidential under Texas Government Code Sections 2059.055 and Texas and 552.139 with possible discussion and action open session. Under Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer with the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending legal or contemplated matters or claims with possible discussion and action open session. And Texas Government Code 551.074A1 regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment due to discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, including appointment to fill vacancy in District One with possible discussion and action in open session. The time is 2:48 PM. We'll take just a five-minute break to clear the room, please. Hey, the Board is coming out of closed session at 3:40 PM with one action item to consider, possible action to extend the application period to fill the vacancy in Regent District number one, extending that application period to September 22nd at 5:00 PM with interviews to be conducted on September 29th at 9:00 AM, beginning at 9:00 AM. Is there a motion to that effect?
So I moved.
Thank you, Ms. Everett.
Dr.?
Thank you, Dr. Sherwood, that's a second for that motion. We will do a roll call vote. Dr. Adami?
Yes.
Regent Everett? Regent Everett, we didn't hear your response?
Yes.
Thank you. Regent Bennett?
Yes.
Regent Estrada?
No.
Regent Hutchinson?
Yes.
Dr. Sherwood?
Yes.
And Regent Scott, I vote yes, so that motion passes. With no other business, we'll look at our calendaring items very quickly. We have now a called meeting on the 29th at 9:00 AM. Dr. Eskamia helped me with our additional calendaring- 9:00 AM. Dr. Eskimia, help me with our additional calendaring items. Our virtual, our ACCT Virtual Leadership Congress is going to occur on August 5th through the 9th. Would like to let you all know that Ms. Lenora Keys and myself will be presenting a session on Thursday, October 8th at 3:30 PM local time, and we're going to be talking about industry needs to college policy, talking about our workforce efforts over the past decade and what we've been doing.
So October 13th will be the next regular board meeting after the special call meeting on the 29th. The week of the 26th through the 30th will be our virtual visit by SACS COC reaffirmation teams. So we'll look forward to that as well. Moving into November, the regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on the 10th. There will be a workshop, so stay tuned for that timing, but the meeting will be on that particular day. And then after that, SACS meeting, we've got SACS Annual Virtual Meeting the first week of December, and also the regular board meeting on December 8th. That should get us through the fall semester.
All right. Thank you all very much. Thank you for participating in this long day. Appreciate all of your time and energy and input. With that, the board is adjourned at 3:43 PM.